All right. Honorable Justice of the Supreme Court of State of Iowa. Here, here. The Honorable Supreme Court of State of Iowa, in our session.
Good morning, please be seated. And welcome. Constitutional Day is observed each year to commemorate the signing of the United States Constitution on September 17th, 1787. September 17th this year falls on a Saturday and we celebrate today Constitution Day. The Iowa Constitution, by the way, was signed 70 years later on March 5th of 1857. So Constitutional Law Day is not just for those who work in the law, it is for all of us. It is for all of us as citizens drawn together by the values and the principles expressed in our Constitution and as a community of people that is devoted to be that more perfect union that is expressed in the preamble to our Constitution. We want to thank the Department of Education and the Iowa State Bar Association for helping plan this day and making the arrangements for the students and others to be more informed of our Constitution. And we welcome this morning the students from Appleton, Parkersburg to our courtroom and we welcome all students across the state who join us through the live stream of these proceedings. We have three cases that will be submitted this morning. Those cases are Board of Waterworks trustees, trustees of the city of Des Moines versus SAC County Board of Supervisors as trustees of various water districts and other county Board of Supervisors as trustees of various water districts. The second case is Danny Holman and others versus Terry E. Branstad, Governor of the State of Iowa. And the final case is Mary and Michael Roth and others versus the Evangelical Lutheran Good Samaritan Society. That final case is submitted now to the court without an argument and where are the arguments in the first case, Board of Waterworks trustees of the city of Des Moines? Mr. Landy.
May it please the Court, Mr. Reck. This case is about responsibility for nitrate pollution in the Raccoon River. The drainage districts claim they have no responsibility, but the physical and legal reality is that drainage districts own and operate government infrastructure that pollutes the drinking water of 500,000 Central Iowans. Drainage districts do have the authority and responsibility as a matter of constitutional home rule and because of their fundamental reason for existing. That fundamental purpose is to serve the interests of the public health and public welfare and the drainage district's position in this case is inconsistent with that fundamental reason for being when they deny any responsibility for water pollution. Des Moines Waterworks asked this court to reject application of an antiquated immunity to a novel water pollution case and instead asked the court to respond to the certified questions in support of Des Moines Waterworks' ability to bring the claims in this case for two reasons. First, because drainage district immunity is based upon the allegedly limited powers of drainage districts and a presumption that drainage is in the interest of the public health and public welfare.
Well, let's start with the second issue then, the presumption. We've all read the statute and what it says. There's all kinds of presumptions. I mean, there's irrevocable presumptions, there's bursting bubble presumptions, there's burden shifting presumptions. But doesn't the case law suggest that this presumption is a categorical or not a fact-based presumption, but is a presumption as a matter of law? And obviously you argue to the contrary and I'm interested in what legal reasoning you could apply to suggest that it's not a categorical presumption.
The first problem with a categorical presumption in this context was noted by this court in the city of Hensler versus the city of Davenport where the court recognized that a presumption that offers no opportunity to rebut it in a civil case violates the procedural due process component of the Iowa Constitution. In this case, the drainage districts are asserting that it is always true that their operation is in the interest of the public health.
Well, they're basically saying it's never a nuisance, are they not? Basically, as a matter of statute, they've said, "Look, whatever these drainage districts do, we are going to presume that the drainage of water is in the public interest." And doesn't that mean that you don't have a nuisance claim?
No, it doesn't because when the presumption is contrary to fact, then it denies the constitutional rights of Des Moines Waterworks. And the fact is here that drainage district immunity is being used to deny Des Moines Waterworks its ability to bring a nuisance claim, which this court recognized creates serious constitutional problems in Borman, Gackey, and Delarna Farms where this court recognized that a immunity that denies an opportunity to bring a nuisance claim operates as a permanent easement on the servient to state and creates an entitlement to just compensation.
Is that case, well, the Gackey, for example, involved a private party. Does it make a difference here where we've got public entities on both sides?
No, Justice Waterman, there has never been a distinction either as a matter of federal or state constitutional law between public and private property for takings purposes. Des Moines Waterworks is empowered under Section 388.4 of the Iowa Code to be a party to a lawsuit. It also confers upon Des Moines Waterworks the authority of a municipality in relation to a water utility.
Can you cite us a case where we've recognized that takings claim by one public entity against another?
No, Justice Waterman, but in Stanleyland Pipeline Company from 1933, this court recognized the principle that there is no distinction between public and private property for takings purposes. And indeed, if there was a distinction, then there would be nothing to stop the state of Iowa from building a highway directly through Waterworks Park. And the same argument could be applied by the Dakota Access Pipeline to deny just compensation to drainage districts anytime the pipeline crossed drainage district infrastructure. That doesn't make sense as a matter of constitutional law and indeed is not the law. A rule that would allow taking of property of public entities without just compensation would also put the state in conflict with federal constitutional law on that issue and there's simply no reason to do that.
Could you address the defendant's argument that we should not answer these certified questions because there's already controlling precedent? And it is unusual for a federal court to certify questions when we've got precedent in this case going back 100 years affirmed as recently as four years ago, holding you can't sue a drainage district for money damages. Should we proceed and answer all four questions?
Yes, Justice Waterman, because this case is unlike any case the court has previously considered. And this court has recognized that it's appropriate to respond to certified questions either when the state of the law is unclear or an accumulation of doctrines call into question an existing rule. Now, it is true, as the drainage district suggests, this court reaffirmed application of the immunity doctrine as recently as 2012. But this court in Chicago Central and Pacific also recognized that it was not going to reassess the doctrine of drainage district immunity under the facts of that case. But this court has also understood that appellate courts would be remiss in their duties if they did not from time to time reexamine the rationales underlying their precedents. And that is what the Des Moines Waterworks is asking the court to do in this case. And if it does, it will see that there has never been a case involving the public health concerns at issue in this case brought against drainage districts.
And in Foley v. Argosy Gaming, didn't we answer certified questions even though the first one asked whether our precedent on that issue still remained the law of Iowa?
That's correct, Justice Waterman. And more importantly, this case presents the quintessential legal question for the court to respond to. The drainage district's argument in the district court was that there is no state of facts under which Des Moines Waterworks can assert a claim because their status as drainage districts and our status as a water utility mean that they cannot be sued. That is very similar to and in fact identical to a motion to dismiss for failure to state a claim, which this court can review on appeal from the district court in state court. And the posture of this case is the same because the drainage districts are asserting there's no state of facts under which a public health case such as this one can be asserted against them.
Ordinarily liability tracks with control. Can the drainage districts control farming practices? And if so, can you point to a provision of the governing statute, Iowa Code, Chapter 468, that allows them to do that?
There's no specific empowerment in Chapter 468 that gives drainage districts express authority to govern farming practices, for example. However, as you noted, Justice Waterman, liability generally tracks with control. And in this case, drainage districts have been the beneficiaries of home rule, which repealed Dillon's rule in this state, which was the previous rationale for giving drainage districts immunity. This court has previously recognized that drainage districts are political subdivisions of the counties in which they are located.
Well, but we've repetitively said that they're not municipalities for purposes of the Tort Claims Act. And not, I mean, we said that in the Fisher case and then in Gard, we reaffirmed it based on stare decisis. So help me, on the one hand, we have a line of authority that says that the drainage districts are not municipalities. One could argue, as Justice Larson did in dissent in Fisher, but... And then the home rule amendment uses the term, I think, municipal corporations. But I'm not sure that you're going to prevail on the issue of home rule in light of the fact that we have held repeatedly that drainage districts are not municipalities.
Fisher is limited to the definition in the political subdivision Tort Claims Act. And so whether or not the drainage districts meet that test is a separate issue from whether or not drainage districts were the beneficiaries of home rule authority. As this court recognized, as drainage districts are subdivisions of the counties in which they are located. And then in Reed versus Muscatine-Lowiza County Drainage District, this court recognized that drainage district authority is coextensive with Board of Supervisor authority. So as Board of Supervisor authority expanded, so too should drainage district authority.
Don't you have to be a municipal corporation to take the benefit of home rule?
The Section 39A applies to counties specifically. And so in this, under these circumstances, given that the counties are the trustees for the drainage districts, we assert that the drainage districts were beneficiaries of home rule as well.
Let me ask you a question. Let's say you win your case 100% and the court then comes to you and says, "Well, be specific, what do you want me to do in my injunction?" What is the end game here? What is the injunction against the drainage districts going to say, apart from sort of generally what you've pled in your complaint of abate the problem?
The relief that Des Moines Waterworks is seeking is an abatement of the nuisance, which would require best management practices on the part of the drainage districts.
Which would be what? Could you be more specific?
There are a variety of remedies that could be implemented at the drainage districts. But fundamentally, what this case seeks to do is to remove the market distortion that this court has put in place by...
Give us a remedy. What would you order the drainage districts to do?
The remedy in this case would be very similar to the remedy for a permit that drainage districts would be required to obtain, which would involve objective metrics and measurements of their discharge of pollution and then efforts to mitigate that pollution discharge.
And what would they supposedly do to mitigate it?
The drainage districts could change the way their ditches are structured, they could change their end of pipe infrastructure to stop water flowing during low-flow periods. There are a number of practices, as a practical matter, that drainage districts could implement that wouldn't necessarily require the drainage districts to stop draining the land. Pollution does not have to be an inherent part of drainage in the same way that alteration of flow and moving water off the land has to be. And so the fact is that by removing the distortion that immunity creates to de-incentivize this action on the part of the drainage districts, there's no doubt that drainage districts would find a cost-effective way of remedying the nuisance that they are creating in this case. It's the presence of the immunity that has distorted the system of incentives that have de-incentivized any action by the drainage districts in this case.
If you want a, oh, thank you. If you want a money judgment, how would the drainage districts pay it? Does there taxing authority that's set up to fund the original construction of the system and repairs? Would that cover, could they tax the landowners in the district to pay a money judgment? And if so, what's your authority for that?
The drainage district statute contains a system of special assessments and levies that would be used to impose upon the landowners within the district and the producers a monetary assessment that would be sufficient to cover the amount of any judgment. And lest there be any concern about subjecting drainage districts to large monetary sums, the principles of tort law that govern a case such as this would limit the exposure of any one drainage district to its percentage of contribution to the harm. And so it's not as though one drainage district would be responsible for the entirety of a tort judgment, but they'd be responsible for their percentage responsibility.
There's another principle of law in economics that looks to the least cost avoider. Does the record tell us, I mean hypothetically, what if it costs less to remove nitrates at one place where the water company pulls out water for its customers as opposed to building a new drainage system in a number of different counties?
Certainly, that principle might come into play in the measure of what an injunction should do. At this stage of the case, it isn't necessary for the court to necessarily resolve that issue. However, it is not necessarily true that it is more inexpensive for Des Moines Waterworks to treat the water than it would be for the drainage districts. Again, Des Moines Waterworks is not suggesting that we rip up the drainage infrastructure in Northwest Iowa and replace it with something different. We're merely suggesting that it is appropriate for the court to not extend drainage district immunity beyond its analytical foundation, which is a foundation premised on the idea that it is important to move the water off the land. But that doesn't mean that it is also necessary for drainage districts to pollute the drinking water of 500,000 Iowans. And if drainage districts persist in that, then it creates a taking without just compensation which violates the Iowa Constitution. Drainage districts have suggested that Des Moines Waterworks is not entitled to any just compensation, which is a denial of a fundamental right, which triggers strict scrutiny analysis under the equal protection as well as due process.
Let me ask you another question. Let's say hypothetically, you did some studies and found out there's a big source of nitrates coming into the, coming into the Raccoon River in, from the city of Des Moines. Could Des Moines Waterworks sue the city of Des Moines, which I take it operates the sewer system, saying, "You're not preventing this pollution if it's, say, a company that's dumping nitrates into the wastewater"?
Justice Mansfield, there's interesting questions related to Des Moines Waterworks' status related to the city, as Des Moines Waterworks is empowered by the city to operate the water utility. But changing the question just slightly to be a question of whether one political subdivision could sue another one for discharge, that would be true. And I see my time has expired, may I have a moment to conclude?
You may.
Your honors, it is important that the court respond to the certified questions and allow Des Moines Waterworks to proceed in this case. Thank you.
Thank you as well, counsel. Mr. Reck.
Thank you, Your Honor. May it please the Court, counsel. I am Mike Reck with the Bell &amp; McCormick Law Firm. I am here representing the drainage districts in SAC County, he's a little taller than I am, SAC County and Buena Vista Counties. I thank you for the opportunity to be here today to present their case. We appreciate the opportunity. We have less than four minutes per question. I will go as fast as I can, I know I'm a notoriously fast talker. What I would say to all of you is you have answered every one of these questions before. Every single one of them has been raised and answered. And that started at least as early as 1907. It has continued since then. And I'm going to go in the same order, I suspect you will divert me from the order if you so desire, but the first question is, can there be a money judgment in tort against drainage districts? I can't say it better than this court already did. A drainage district could not be subject to money judgment in tort under any state of facts. That's what this court told us. This is not some offhand comment that was made once in some, in the 75th page of some ruling.
Well, it's been made repetitively and it goes back to, I guess, 1903 or maybe it's 1904 or whatever and then as recently, I guess, as 1994 in the Gard case and maybe even later in some of our cases. But is it right? I mean, the early cases, we're in the heyday of sovereign immunity. Today, we have a little different view of tort liability. The argument in the early cases, as I understand it, and please, please correct me or expand, is the notion that these drainage districts have limited powers. And surely they do. I mean, there's a statutory framework and they can't go outside statutory framework. But that's true of just about every government entity. I mean, the Department of Human Services has limited authority as well. All government agencies have limited authority. So, you know, maybe in 1900, this was right. Sovereign immunity was very much alive then. Tell us why it still should prevail today.
So I'm going to give you multiple answers to one question and I'm going to go in reverse order in response to them. First of all, it's right because you told us it's right. And you told us it's right and that it has stare decisis protection at this point because the legislature has left it in place. And if the legislature wanted to overturn this doctrine, they could have. Second, it needs to stay in place because this is not the proper proceeding to bring up that particular question. A certified question is, it is an issue of federalism. It makes sense under federalism for the federal court to say, "I don't have an answer from the state Supreme Court and I'd like one." That is deferential to the state. It's something else entirely for the federal court to say, "I don't like your answer, will you reconsider it?" That is not respecting the federalism. The third point, Your Honor, is yes, indeed, it is correct. And it is correct because of the reasons that you stated that the immunity exists. These entities, drainage districts, are merely vehicles for effectuating the will of the legislature. They don't have powers beyond doing what they're told to do. Either restore, once these are created, right? Once there's a decision that a drainage district is created, and none of these was created after the 1940s, most of them in the teens in this case, once it is created, you have two duties. Restore flow if it is plugged, we're told maybe we should slow flow at certain points. We're not allowed to slow flow. We're only allowed to restore flow or increase flow. That's it. And we're told how to do it and we're told what the remedies are to respond to issues such as these. And that is to bring an action under the, under 468 to address those issues.
Mr. Reck, can I explore the limits of your kind of, "You can't sue us" argument? Let's say I'm a contractor and I supplied some tile to one of your clients and you didn't pay the bill. Am I out of luck? I can't do anything?
No, not at all. There is a mandamus action if we have a duty. So there are a couple of questions within there, right? Are there circumstances where it would not be possible to sue for that? There are. But if we have made an obligation and created a duty for ourselves to pay, in other words, through a contract, I say ourselves for the drainage districts, I empathize with my clients, then you can bring a mandamus action to compel payment. And indeed, Your Honor, there are several cases just like that where there have been suits brought for those payments.
Even if the goods have been delivered, time has lapsed and I can then sue for, I mean, isn't that just a suit for damages at that point? I'm asking for money.
So it goes back to the existence of a duty in that particular case. You are asking for money, but if the, if the action has occurred, right? You're talking now about contract as opposed to tort. They're talking about tort. But if we have, if our districts have entered into a contract and they have failed to fulfill their duty, then mandamus is a remedy to compel them to fulfill that duty because they've undertaken that obligation. Here, there is no allegation that the drainage districts are doing anything beyond what they are absolutely compelled to do. If the legislature tells you, "You must do something," you must do it. I've come up with many number of analogies, but one would be the process server. If you don't like the subpoena you've gotten and the materials in it, you don't sue the process server. Drainage districts are merely a vehicle that the state legislature created to promote the goal of drainage that they chose.
Are the draining districts doing anything differently than what they've been doing for the last 100 and so years?
No, Your Honor.
Nothing?
No. They are draining water as they were compelled to do. Has technology changed in some ways? Not much. Not much. And certainly those facts are not before this court, but they are doing exactly what they are directed to do, which is drain water. Home rule, I think you've already hit the point, home rule didn't change drainage districts. In addition, home rule states that you must defer to the state legislature, it is not a basis to override it. What drainage districts are doing is what 468 tells them to do.
But there's not a provision in the chapter that expressly says there's no money damages. I mean, so if home rule applied, it seems to me you would have the burden of showing a specific statute that says no money damage, no injunctive relief, et cetera.
Well, this court in Fisher said it was the statutes that compelled that result. And so indeed, I would say this court has told us that the statutes do hold that. And the court since 1904, as you point out, I choose 1907 because the Gish case is so clear, but they've never overruled that. And that becomes the proper interpretation of that statute and the effect of that statute. And this court has held that it has become that because twice...
Talk about injunctive relief.
Yes.
And you've heard the discussion that although our cases have said no money damages, we have allowed at least mandamus, ordinarily an equitable remedy, they're, I think, seeking injunctive relief perhaps more accurately than mandamus, but equitable relief nonetheless. Our cases don't bar equitable relief, it seems to me. Obviously, there has to be a legal foundation for the equitable relief, but am I correct? A, that equitable relief is not barred? B, therefore potentially there's injunctive relief? And the question is C, is there a legal basis for the injunctive?
So the answers would be yes, no, and yes. All right? There is, you are moving on to the second question, I think appropriately so. The question is, can you bring an action for injunctive relief? Yes, you can, through the vehicle of mandamus. And the way we answer, the way I would answer that question, first of all, is to ask what is the definition of mandamus? If there is a duty of an inferior tribunal or inferior entity, then the proper vehicle to force that governmental entity to do that is mandamus.
But mandamus is very narrow.
It is.
There's probably good reason you're using the term mandamus rather than injunction. Injunction is a broader remedy and mandamus, as we all know, lies only for clear legal duty. Let me go back, if you don't mind, to the question, can they bring an injunctive action?
Not outside mandamus, no. And that is the answer to the second question. Mandamus, it is limited to mandamus. So there, one of two things is true, right? Either there is a duty that the drainage districts are to fulfill and they can pursue it through mandamus. Or two, there is no duty at all and they shouldn't be bringing this suit.
I guess I don't understand, please help me. Ordinarily, I think, courts of equity have the authority to enter injunctions as appropriate. Injunction is ordinarily a very flexible remedy. And, you know, the cases go on endlessly about how the court has kind of the equitable power to fashion the remedy. And Justice Mansfield was asking some questions about, well, what exactly would this equitable remedy look like? Mandamus is a much narrower doctrine and I understand you're trying to keep us on mandamus, but I'm not sure I understand why the court doesn't have power to have broader equitable relief in the form of an injunction.
So there are a couple of answers to that. One, you, again, you've told me so. I start out by telling you that the court has addressed all of these issues.
Where have we said no injunction?
So...
I missed that.
Okay. So if you look at Chicago Central, suits against drainage districts have been allowed only to compel, complete, or correct the performance of a duty or the exercise of a power by those acting on behalf of a drainage district. In other words, that's all that's allowed is to compel them to exercise a duty. Your honors, the question would be then, what is the remedy to compel? And that's why I say I go back to the definition of mandamus. What is the remedy to compel an inferior tribunal to take an action? That remedy is indeed mandamus in the code. And if you look at the case law, there are three categories you could fall into. One, those cases that have analyzed whether mandamus is the remedy, and there are a number of those, Chicago Central being one, where it talks about mandamus being the appropriate remedy. Two, there are those cases that didn't really consider whether it should be or should not be mandamus. And there are a couple of those. There are no cases that say, "We've looked at it and mandamus should not be the remedy." And the reason...
Help me out. What is the, I mean, what's the difference between mandamus and injunction other than one's Latin and one's not? I mean, they're saying you have a duty to stop the nitrates from getting in the Raccoon River.
And I think...
So they're going to say, "Well, it was just a mandamus." I mean, I can foresee that argument.
I think Justice Apple actually hit the nail on the head. Mandamus has a more deferential standard of review, that you are limited in terms of what you can do, there is deference given. In addition, there are limits on the number of claims that can be joined to it and there are limits on where it can be brought. And those are intentional. And indeed, to your point, Justice Apple, and to answer your question, Justice Mansfield, that is precisely why you should not allow them to do what they're doing. They are trying to escape limitations on mandamus in what is in essence a mandamus action. And that is not proper. You should not be allowed to subvert or escape the mandates of the law by calling it something else. And that comes up in many, many contexts. And that comes up in many, many contexts.
What are the limits of the district's taxing powers? Hypothetically, if there were a money judgment for the cost of nitrates, could they go back to the landowner members and assess that?
It is a fascinating question. And because of 113 years of precedence, we have no answer to that, because there's never been the ability to bring a tort suit. But there is, your honor, to answer your question as best I can, there is a procedure called remonstrance, where if you're seeking to create an improvement, the farmers, the landowners, I should say, can vote it down. They can strike it down. What would be the result if you so ruled and they struck it down, under the statute as they are allowed to? I genuinely don't know the answer to that question, because it has been so clear for so many years that that sort of suit can't be brought.
And people rely on our cases. That's one of the values of stare decisis. So I'm guessing there is no liability insurance for drainage districts? Because why spend, why pay premiums for something they understood they didn't need?
That is correct, your honor. And your honors, I'm getting short on time. I'm going to go to the third question, which is the constitutional question. And they have folded two questions into one. They seem to say takings, the takings analysis makes this a fundamental right which creates strict scrutiny. That is not correct. You cannot take a takings claim and stick it in the equal protection clause or some other clause. And if you look at 81 F sup, third.
I think you're right on that. But let's talk about takings just a bit. I mean, ordinarily, I mean, there's a lot of law saying nuisance might be a taking and so forth. And it seems to me, the underlying question is, is this a nuisance? If it were a nuisance, you know, under the case law, they may, they may have some traction. So address the question, is this not a nuisance because of statute? Why isn't this a nuisance?
Okay. So there, I'm going to back into that question as well, and I hope answered. I'm sure you'll tell me if I have not. The drainage districts, you have to, the takings, there has to be a property right. There has to be a stick within the bundle that you have. And I'm going to start out with a GAKI decision, because I think it fundamentally makes our point not theirs. In GAKI, there was a statute that said, "We are going to take an easement across your property for odor," right? And you said, "No, you cannot do that, because you're taking a right that they had." The drainage district never had this right. They were always the servient estate. That stick was never within their bundle of rights. Why do I say that? Because this court has said it over and over. We cited the Maven versus Olson decision, which said the, there is an easement for drainage. And Maven versus Olson says, "And for changes in drainage. You, the downstream owners, have to understand that drainage may change in the future, that it may increase, it may decrease. You take it as the servient estate."
So you're saying there's an easement to pollute, if you will, and that regardless of what the content of the water is, it's the problem of the downstream user? And the legislature has basically said, downstream user, you subsidize the cost of farming if it creates.
So I don't say it as much as Mason City and Fort Dodge Rail Company says it. The making of the improvement is within the police power of the state. An injury such as here claimed, being merely incidental thereto, cannot be regarded as a taking of property within the contemplation of the Constitution. These cases, when I say they were all decided, these were decided at the time that these drainage districts came into existence. And, your honor, that's not isolated. Chicago and Northwest Railway v. Drainage District Number Five, 121 Northwest, 193, and the U.S. Supreme Court, Chicago B&amp;Q Rail Yard v. People vs. State of Illinois, 200 U.S. 561, states quite clearly that the dominant estate is the upstream user for drainage purposes. Why? Because our legislature made the determination that this is a societal value, no place more than the state of Iowa. Your honor, I have run out of my time. I thank you very much. And if you'll indulge me for a moment, I have never had such an auspicious group as in our gallery here today. I appreciate your indulgence and theirs in what perhaps was a little bit of a dry argument. Thank you.
Thank you as well, counsel. Mr. Landy, you may rebut.
May it please the court. Justice Apple, I want to pick up on a comment or a discussion you were having with Mr. Reck here about the nature of drainage districts. And Mr. Reck talked about the case of Maven versus Olson. And it is true that Maven allowed for overflow and alteration of flow damages, and did not find that to be an unconstitutional taking. But what we have to understand about Maven is the court saw overflow as being the cardinal purpose of drainage. And in that case, the court distinguished as inapplicable to its consideration of overflow a set of pollution cases that the aggrieved party in that case was relying upon to say that the drainage districts were creating an unconstitutional and impermissible nuisance. We can see in the court's history that the court saw pollution as being something fundamentally different than alteration of flow. In the court's history, the court has held political subdivisions such as municipalities liable for sewage discharge, that they, even if the system was not negligently designed or implemented.
Well, I'm not 100% sure. Back to basics, as I was talking with Mr. Reck, taking does require a property, taking of a property interest, if you will. We all agree with that. What is a property interest? Property interest is normally defined by state law. And the state law in this case is that when the drainage district embarks on its drainage function, it is presumed to be in the public interest and so forth, as the statute says. If that statute, in fact, is a categorical statute, I think you're done. So come at me.
A categorical statute that's contrary to fact creates a serious constitutional problem. And the fact is that the drainage districts are discharging levels of a nitrate pollutant into the Raccoon River, in some cases at four times the legally safe drinking water limit.
I think the statute, arguably, arguably, simply declares, I mean, frankly, what's a property right and what isn't? It's not a question of not being able to prove a fact. It's a question of a legal declaration. I'm having trouble with your due process argument. So I invite you again to come back.
The fundamental problem with the statute in this case is that drainage districts are creating a problem that they don't have to create. Drainage districts don't have to pollute in order to drain the land. That's the point of Des Moines Water Works' claims in this case. And the court has historically recognized a distinction between the necessity of draining the land to make the ground tillable and pollution claims. That's what we learned from the court's decision in Maven. The court has historically also recognized that human health has become a more important interest for the court to protect over time than it was at the time that the court was developing drainage district immunity in the early 20th century.
Isn't this really a cost issue, not a threat to public health, assuming Des Moines Water Works is doing its job to treat the water before it reaches customers, right? It's really a, who pays for the cost of nitrates?
It isn't just a cost issue, Justice Waterman. As recent episodes, as recently as 2013 show, Des Moines Water Works' ability to treat the and manage the nitrate problem have been taxed to the breaking point. And there is simply no reason why drainage, why Des Moines Water Works should have to bear all of the responsibility for cleaning the water, when the drainage districts are the ones who install the infrastructure, who create the problem. Mr. Reck talked a lot about duty, and whether or not the drainage districts have a duty. They do have a duty. It's in Section 468.1. It's a duty to act in the interests of the public health. And when the drainage districts discharge dangerous levels of a pollutant into the river, they are abrogating that duty. They are not doing what they are supposed to be doing.
Let me ask you kind of, it's probably a stupid question, but does anything we decide today affect your count one, your Clean Water Act claim, your federal claim?
No, Justice Mansfield. It would be Des Moines Water Works' assertion that the federal statute is a separate and independent remedy of what the court decides today. Now, just, if the Clean Water Act does govern this case, that doesn't preclude Des Moines Water Works from still asserting its nuisance and constitutional claims.
But the notion that we're kind of deciding the issue once and for all forever is perhaps not correct, right? I mean, I'm not saying you're making that claim, but one should not get the impression that our ruling is dispositive of the case, right?
It would not be dispositive of all claims, but it would potentially chill any further challenge of drainage district immunity.
Could I ask one last question? You mentioned there's a statutory duty that in play here, 468.1. Why not bring a mandamus action to enforce that duty?
I see my time has expired. May I respond? Justice Waterman, the court has never only required mandamus relief to be brought against drainage district. We cite at least five examples where equitable relief, other than mandamus, has been permitted. And as was noted previously, the mandamus remedy is confined in a limited remedy. Thank you.
Thank you as well, Mr. Reck, or Mr. Landy. And again, Mr. Reck, thank you as well. The case then is now submitted, and we'll sit in a brief recess to allow the students to leave the courtroom and others, and before we hear the next case.